Our heaven Father, we once again, Lord, thank you, Lord, for allowing us to gather together. Father, since our last meeting, Lord, we just went through a tough time with this storm. We thank you, Lord, for keeping our arms around us, Lord, during this, during our time of disruption and uncertainty. But Father, through it all, you led us through. Father, we partake in this meeting today, Lord, let us continue, Lord, put our minds together and make this kind of a better place, not only for our citizens, but for our students and all our businesses. In the name of your son, Jesus' name, amen.
Amen.
Thank you. I trust you've had a chance to look at the agenda. Are there any corrections or additions that we need to make before we begin? If not, I entertain a motion to accept the agenda for tonight as printed.
It's all moved, second.
It's been moved in second that we accept the agenda as printed, all in favor. Let it be known by raising your right hand. Thank you, unanimous. We have a public hearing, ordinance 776 approving and ratifying the inclusion of a site in multi, in the multi-county industrial park agreement with Darlington County, and also an alternative allocation method for the distribution of the fee in lieu of avaleran tax payments among the tax entities within the county, which are paid by the company located on such site in the multi-county industrial park and other matters related thereto. Is anyone present? Do you have comments, Mr. Monahan?
Yes ma'am, this is a typical agreement that we do with other counties to allow them to provide more incentives to companies locating there in Darlington County, and they, of course, return the favor when we have a project. So it's a standard arrangement we do.
No one present. I'll call the public hearing to close. Next, we have approved our minutes in the September 11, 2018 regular meeting. Any additions or corrections for the minutes?
Madam Chair, I'll make a motion, those are the minutes as written.
Second. It's been moved in second that we accept the minutes as written for the September 11, 2018 meeting. All in favor, let it be known by raising your right hand. Thank you. Old business, 776, an ordinance approving and ratifying the inclusion of a site in the multi-county industrial park agreement that we just held a public hearing on. If there are no other questions or comments, we're at the third reading.
Motion.
It's been moved in second that we approve third reading for ordinance 776, all in favor. Please let it be known by raising your right hands. Thank you. New business, ordinance 777, authorizing the execution and delivery of a fee in lieu of avaleran taxes agreement buying between Marlboro County, South Carolina, and Project Sunshine to provide for payment of fee in lieu of taxes and other related matters. This is the first reading entitled only. Mr. Monahan, you have some comments for us?
Yes ma'am, we've been talking about the Baldor project for a long time.
This is Baldor.
And so this is the first legal action to move towards that project. As you know, it requires three readings for an ordinance and a public hearing, and the law allows us to do it by title only in order to get those readings started. We always want to make sure we don't hold anyone up that wants to make investments in the community. So this is just a, by title only, it starts that reading process, allows us to fine tune the details and bring it back to you again. So we're excited that we're able to move, take this first step. We met with the project this, I guess it was this week or last week, they all run together with the hurricanes, and they are moving forward with the project. They haven't closed on it, but it's a good sign.
It's been a long time, so we're glad to be at this position now. Alright, thank you.
Madam Chair, I make a motion for ordinance 777.
Uh, second.
It's been moved in second that we accept ordinance 777, first reading title only, while the details have been worked out. All in favor, let it be known by raising your right hands. Thank you, unanimous. Resolution 101801, identifying a project to satisfy the requirements of Title 12, Chapter 14 of the South Carolina Code of Laws, so as to allow investment expenditures incurred by a company known to the county as Project Sunshine, its affiliates and related entities, to qualify as expendables eligible for a fee in lieu of tax agreement with Marlboro County, South Carolina, providing for other related economic development incentives and other matters related thereto.
This is a companion resolution to the ordinance. Again, this is general enough that you're able to pass this and move forward with the other parts we have to do. This is Baldor, the Baldor project as well.
Madam Chair, I make a motion, we accept resolution 101801.
Second.
Alright, it's been moved in second that we approve this resolution as a companion to the ordinance for 777. This is resolution 101801. All in favor, let it be known by raising your right hands. Thank you. Next, resolution 101802, authorizing the execution and delivery of a letter agreement affecting a termination of a fee agreement buying between Marlboro County, South Carolina, and Reliance Electrical Company dated as of June 2007, whereby Marlboro County agrees to the termination of such fee agreement and other matters related thereto.
This is, we had a previous agreement with the company that was in Baldor, so you have to cancel that to start the new one. So another legal technicality.
I move we accept this resolution.
Second.
It's been moved in second that we approve resolution 101802. All in favor, let it be known by raising your right hands. Thank you. Next, resolution 101803, approving a budget amendment to the 2018-2019 budget as requested by the Marlboro County Administrator to allow for expenditures for mosquito abatement.
Yes ma'am. We have sprayed for mosquitoes once and also put pellets in the standing water that kills the larvae of the mosquitoes, and we've spent, Mr. Caraboa?
Twenty-eight.
Twenty-eight. So about thirty thousand dollars. We want, we ask, we're asking for fifty to allow us to have a follow-up spray. And we're asking for a budget amendment, just so it trues our budget back up, we don't have an overrun. We did receive notice from the state that there was some money available to help with spraying. However, we've learned that that is a loan from the state that we can use until we would hopefully get FEMA funding. But after consulting with some other county administrators, it'd be very difficult for us to get the FEMA funding. FEMA, not to bore everyone, but FEMA requires you to know what kind of and how many mosquitoes you had before the storm, before, and then after the storm, and to make a point that they're different mosquitoes, and so it's difficult to get that funding. So at this point, if, we'll of course follow through with all that, and if we can get money, we want money. But to be realistic about it, it's more than likely going to come out of our budget, and I see no need to borrow money from the state when we can borrow it from ourselves, from our reserve funds. So that's where we are with mosquitoes, mosquito abatement, and this would allow us to amend the budget so that everything's in order.
And I like for council and the public to know that the Administrator and the Administrator Committee made this decision because it was a public health, safety issue, because we know mosquitoes carry viruses and other diseases, and there have been some reports in surrounding counties of people becoming ill, and even people here with unusual sicknesses. So we made that decision to spend the money wisely to try to protect our citizens. And I agree with what you said about not accepting the loan until we know that we can get the money. Any other comments or questions?
I'll second the motion.
Alright, it's been moved in second that we approve resolution 101803 to amend the budget for an amount up to fifty thousand dollars to pay for additional expenses for mosquito abatement. All in favor, let it be known by raising your right hands. Alright, thank you, it's unanimous. Next, resolution 101804, authorizing the county administrator to enter into a memorandum of understanding with the FEMA for the purpose of providing temporary office space at the Marion Wright Eldon Public Library, so as to provide disaster relief assistance to the citizens of Marlboro County as a result of damages suffered from Hurricane Florence. Is this office open from eight to eight, five days a week?
Uh, that's, I think it's open seven to seven.
Seven to seven, okay.
This is asking for forgiveness, I've already signed it. You know, sometimes in the heat of battle, you have to do what you have to do, and they needed to mobilize, and we didn't want them to be somewhere where people couldn't get to it easily. So I did take it upon myself to sign it. Of course, you could vote it down, and we could move them out tomorrow, but I figured y'all'd be okay with that.
And they're in the back classroom, the back classrooms with the entrance behind the buildings, I've seen the flags and the signs up. So there's good signage for that. And that's five days a week, Monday through Friday?
I think it's seven days a week.
Seven days, okay, good, wonderful.
I move we accept this resolution.
Seven.
Alright, it's been moved in second that we accept resolution 101804, providing the Federal Emergency Management Association housing in our public library. All in favor, let it be known by raising your right hands. Thank you. Please give us an update, Mr. Monahan, on the long-term recovery group?
Yes ma'am, this is not necessarily a county function, but in the, in the, dealing with FEMA and dealing with lots of folks regarding storm recovery, it became clear that most counties that have had a storm or disaster have what's called a long-term recovery group. And what it does is establish a group that donations can be made to, monetary donations can be made to, that, that has very well-defined rules on how to disperse that stuff. So they have a way of making sure it gets, the help gets to the right folks. It is designed to be not political. In fact, the bylaws even say an elected official or high-ranking government person cannot be an officer. And so the intent is to, you know, to make sure that folks don't look after their folks, because that's how we all work. So I gathered that information about how these things work, and we called a meeting of different charities and groups, church groups and charities here in the community. I think we had three meetings. And, you know, the group doesn't exist, so we're trying to invent it out of, out of thin air. And the group, the folks that did attend chose a board, accepted some bylaws, and that board has met and incorporated to create it. And they're meeting again tomorrow, the board is, to establish an account with, it's almost like a bank for these type things, to allow them to go ahead and take donations before they have their own 501(c)(3). It's a, it's called Eastern Carolina Foundation something, something. So they're moving along with this. It is a good thing, they have one in Marion County that's been very successful. It doesn't shut down after a storm passes. It's always kind of there, and then the next time you have something, you're ready to roll. It, it would likely be the type of assistance where if you had a house in Richardson Park, and you went to FEMA, and you got what you could get, and you went to insurance and got what you could get, and you still needed a thousand dollars, you know, this would be where you went. We already have some industrial donations that some council members have helped with that are on hold, waiting for this to be done. They have asked, and they would have, the board members would have been here tonight, but I talked with Dr. Prince and was comfortable with giving you the update. They would like to see if the county would let them have some office space on a very temporary basis, and if the council would consider giving them like a five thousand dollar donation, just so they can go ahead and get letterhead made up, and maybe hire somebody to answer the phone until the donations come in. So that's, that's a request they've made. But I can try to answer any questions about it, that's kind of it in a nutshell.
To add to what he said, the emphasis is on making sure that any resources that are sent to the county or provided for citizens are managed in a way that the people who were impacted or who need the services or the resources is delivered to them. It will be a 501(c)(3), so any individuals or organizations donating money, of course, it will be tax exempt. In addition to the industrial donation, Harvest Hope Food Bank contacted us, and they are going to provide a variety of foods and cleaning supplies and those kinds of things. And I immediately made them in contact with this group, because that is their function. And it's much needed that it's coordinated through one organization, so that there is transparency, and that any monies collected would be housed properly and spent properly. So that's a concern of people that are willing to give donations. So we thank everyone that participated and agreed to be a member. You have another comment?
Yeah, I just, one question had come up when we organized it, is, it's encouraged that it be a new, separate group. You know, everyone, lots of folks come up and go, well, my organization's a 501(c)(3), why don't you just run it through this, or run it through that? That's not how it's supposed to work. It should be a separate agreement, separate committee or organization. I won't be involved with this, I just kicked it, got it going, and Dr. Prince is involved as well. It should be a separate, independent organization, as Dr. Prince said.
So my affiliation with Harvest Hope goes back for a few years. Those of you that know that the nonprofit, our children, their future, purchased the food for the weekend school, food program in the elementary schools. So they contacted me, and I said, well, we have an organization for that, so I'm not in that loop, I don't have time, and it's not appropriate for me to be in that loop. So we're doing all that we can to help our citizens in the best way possible. So this is a good start.
We did have a request.
Yes. They're asking for temporary office space and a startup grant of five thousand dollars.
Do we have a location in mind? Have you looked at any kind of building, any location?
No, I just, no. We'll just have to, you know, so much going on, we'll, I've got some ideas, but I want to be careful I don't shove somebody into somebody else's office without talking to the people. So yes, sir, I've got some ideas, but just haven't talked to the right people yet.
I like the idea of being not political, keeping political people out of the name that's holding the public office, shouldn't be involved in it.
And the newspaper compliments of Ms. Hope did a really nice article, last week's paper. So if you want to know some more about the organization, grab the paper. Alright, can we, what he approved of the five thousand dollars in office space?
Motion.
Second.
Alright, it's been moved in second that we grant them temporary office space and a one-time grant of five thousand dollars for startup funds. All in favor, let it be known by raising your right hand. Thank you, it's approved. Any appointments to boards and commissions? Hearing none, we have our reports from the Finance Department and the Administrator's report. This is Moore.
Make sure you're on TV. I know how much you are.
As of the month of September, expenditures were at twenty-four percent of the budgeted amount. Revenues as of this month were at nine percent, but this is routine for this point of the year before tax revenue starts coming in. Revenue should increase over the next few months, since tax notices should be going out soon, and those monies will begin to come in. Our office has been very busy, also working on the payroll conversion to ADP. I have met with several different team members throughout this process, and I can honestly say that every time I speak with someone new, they show me something else about this system that impresses me. So we're very excited about it. It is very different than anything we've used before, but the system's capabilities are a much-needed upgrade, which will allow us to greatly improve the efficiency of our payroll process, and also will allow us to go paperless. So, and we are planning to go live with this system in November. Are there any questions?
Thank you.
Now for our Administrator, the Administrator's report this week, this month, we'll start with the employee service anniversaries, as we do every month. Sheila Coven in seven years, Veronica Harris, five years, Ray Kelly, sixteen years, Hosea Lemon, eleven years, Kay Loner, sixteen years, Lee McQueen, seventeen years, Candace Pate, seven years, and DT Turner, six years. We have a couple of upcoming events. One's been postponed. We had a plan for a hurricane response debrief meeting, where we get everyone together to see what worked and didn't work. Unfortunately, a new hurricane has postponed the old hurricane meeting, so we thought we were done with those for now. You'll see on your handout that the Association of Counties has their County Coalition Fall Meeting in Columbia on the 25th. You can get with Ms. Bundy, and she can sign you up and give you more details on that. As far as economic development goes, you've taken action tonight to move the Baldor project along. Keep your fingers crossed, I'm really excited about it, but we've been talking about it a long time, so let's, let's hope we can, I fed them lunch from CL10, so that ought to push them to the edge, right there.
Oh yeah.
CL10's a little restaurant in, in Cloud. As part of the Administrator's report, one thing I wanted to bring to your attention, we had a number of citizen complaints during the storm about watershed, what we call watershed ditches. And these are ditches that were built in the 60s on the south side of town and go out into the country. They're almost like canals, and they drain that, that section of the county. They were built in the 60s, and they have a board that oversees it, but the board has become inactive. The board, I think, to be on it, if you have to live in that area and then get a petition signed, and then it's on the ballot, you vote for it. You know, over the years, you've probably seen that on your ballot and go, what is this? Well, that's what it is. These ditches haven't been maintained in a number of years. It's not a county thing. In the past, the county has done projects, they paid for to do this. But we learned, learned this week that there is a question on the ballot this time to dissolve this organization. Now, I've spoken with our attorney McLeod here, and we, at first, don't see where it falls on the county if this happens, but we're going to look into it a little bit more, considering the concerns our citizens had about them, and also the fact that we weren't aware it was going to be on the ballot until my mother was reading her ballot to me, you know. And so I just, as I always want to make sure there's not something that's getting ready to fall financially on the county here. I understand that their board is inactive, and it can't get anybody to be a part of it, that makes it tough on them. But we need to make sure that we do what's right.
Do they have a budget?
No, they don't, they, they have their money, but the law allows them to levy taxes. So if they had an active board, they could come out and say, we're going to levy taxes, and we could, you know, raise money to do this, to maintain this.
So is that a special source district?
It is a special purpose district. It was created in the 60s, so you can still create one, but it was a lot easier back before Home Rule to do things. But they are inactive, but they have the means of paying for it themselves. They did approach the county when I first came here, about wanting the county to do it, and it's hard for me to bring that to you all, if they have the authority to raise their own taxes, instead of you having to raise taxes for them.
Now, on tax raising, will it be for countywide, or just within that area?
It's just that district.
Just within that area.
You know, I imagine the district boundaries are where those ditches are. I didn't pull a map on it. So, but we had a lot of calls about Brushy Day Road. You might have seen it on TV, and people went to TV about it, and, you know, whether it would have made a difference or not if they were maintained, you know, I don't know. But I guess two points is, those aren't county ditches. And even if they do away with this, right now, we think they won't become county ditches. We will do some more research and advise you all, because if we were to find they would become county ditches, we would probably want to challenge the ballot. You know, so, okay. Another issue I want to make you aware of is that we were contacted about the city of Bennettsville, and they're changing part of their policy for picking up trash and stuff in the city. Now, if you clean out your building, storage building, or you have something going on, and you put it on the side of the street, and they'll pick up about anything. They quit picking up couches and TV sets and all that a while back, but they're, they're moving towards only picking up the rollout carts and, you know, limbs and leaves. So that's, you know, that's their business, and that's fine. The only thing is, you all put a forty-dollar fee on everybody outside the city, and we allow folks to bring their stuff to the county dump for free. So we can't allow the city folks who aren't paying that fee to bring stuff to our dumps for free. So we're going to have to spend some money to make it where we can charge money if you don't live and out in the county. Not that big a deal, but a little bit of a deal. You know, next year, when you're doing the budget, you could consider adding a fee on city residents, and it would be free for them. And it would probably split that forty dollars up to where it would be less for everybody. But we can't do that right now, so we're going to have to make those changes, procedural changes. Just wanted to make you aware of that. I think it'd be the first of the year before the change went into effect, but with our budgets, as we do them now, we don't leave a lot of extra in for things that, you know, like this, but we'll make do. Hurricane Michael, here we go again, we've got another storm at five o'clock, looks like it comes straight through here. And the winds are estimated, tropical force winds are, tropical storm force winds are expected to get here in the morning on Thursday, which means forty miles per hour or greater. It's, seems to be a more typical hurricane that'll come through quickly. You know, the thing about Florence is it sat there and just went on and on and on. But we did meet, as we did before, with all the agencies in the community. We met today, this afternoon, at the library. And of course, we're all looking at each other, like, do we really need to do this? But we did, we met briefly and made sure we had all our bases covered. And we feel confident we're ready to respond. With regards to Hurricane Florence, you know, we haven't met since then, and it seemed like our work at the county's been consumed by Hurricane Florence for the last month. We're all still dealing with it, we're still trying to recover and do our regular work, which has fallen behind. But I am very proud of the response of county staff and the staff of other organizations, their response during the storm. Everyone from the city of Bennettsville to EMS and fire service and everyone, worked well together. What, we had all kinds of plans and processes in place, and those worked great. And when something went wrong, we figured out what to do, and we took care of it. I mean, at five in the morning, the 911 center flooded. You know, I get a call, and we're standing in water up to our knees unplugging the drains. I mean, we did what we had to do. And it was just very encouraging to see all these different agencies come together and do, do their thing. We did have a lot of meetings ahead of the storm, like we did today, and I think that was instrumental in how well it worked. We were all looking at each other in a room and asking questions, and making sure we hear each other's plans. Sometimes folks don't like to have meetings, but those were good meetings. We also did our best during the storm to keep the public informed and put things out on Facebook. You know, the newspaper did their thing, but of course, that's not every day. I think we did a decent job with that. We wanted folks to know what was going on, but we also wanted folks to know that we were doing something. And so they knew that we were at least out there in it, and we're doing our best. And we, we did more than we have before. Every time we'll do more. We want to do what we can for our citizens. In the next couple of weeks, we'll host debrief meetings, like I mentioned, that's been postponed. You know, we'll have some, we'll have one tomorrow, I think, with, is it tomorrow, with just my staff. And then we'll expand out to where we talk about, hey, this worked really well, next time we ought to have, you know, this, and next time we could do this a little different. You know, I feel like those are very important, to have those meetings, particularly right after, when it's still fresh, and just get better and better and better. And the last thing, I just want to personally thank council. You know, it's, 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 makes our job, staff job, a whole lot easier when you guys have empowered us and allowed us to do our jobs, and you're not in the middle of everything trying to, you know, direct us or make us go to one area, not the other area. Staff stepped up, and everybody that works in my organization did their jobs and way, way more. And you guys, you ladies and gentlemen on council were there to support us. You called, we talked, you know, anything we needed, y'all were right there. And we really appreciate that. It goes a long way, and it creates a really good environment for us to do our jobs. So we appreciate that. And that's all I have.
Alright, thank you. Any questions for Mr. Monahan? We have Dr. McCord, Superintendent from Marlboro County School District here. Dr. McCord, come forward, please.
Good afternoon. First of all, let me say thank you for allowing me the opportunity to come and speak this afternoon. I was trying to be brief. I would like to also say thank you to... I would like to also say thank you to, uh, county administrator, uh, Munderlin, for the support that the county provided, not just to Marlboro County, but to the school district of Marlboro County. Very fortunate to have, have been able to work in concert with him and his team. Uh, another thank you for county employers to Sheriff Lemon, uh, for providing services to our high school, uh, football team, uh, by way of security. I think, uh, what he has done has shown, uh, once again, that we can do more together than we can apart. And so I do want to personally acknowledge you and say thank you for your support. Uh, lastly, I'm here to speak on an item that I'm hoping to get your support with, and that is the dissemination of accurate information as it relates to a particular question that will be on the ballot next month. Uh, that question is, uh, one that deals specifically with the ten million dollar ask from the school district to the public. Although I can't advocate for a vote one way or the other, I can ask that you support us by making sure that we do have accurate information out in our community. Uh, we have three issues that we're trying to address with the ten million dollars, and that is, uh, first and foremost, safety and security. We want all of our school buildings and, uh, facilities to be safe at all times. Uh, secondly, uh, we need to have some upgrades in some of our buildings. If you have, uh, ties to any of our schools, or if you attended one of our schools, uh, you probably know all well better than I do that there needs to be some changing, uh, in some of our facilities, and we need your support with that. And then lastly, uh, for new construction at BIS, Bennetts, Bennettsville Intermediate School. Those changes will include a new cafeteria, a new state of the art auditorium that can be used not just for, uh, school county use, but also for public use as well. Uh, and then, of course, uh, we'll have some other items that will be discussed in future board meetings. I don't know if I'm over my three minutes yet, but once again, I wanted to say thank you, publicly acknowledge the help and support that we received during the storm. Hopefully, we won't have to do that again for another five hundred years. I wanted to thank Sheriff, uh, for his support, and then, uh, ask that you support us in our efforts in making sure that we get accurate information out. The information is posted on our website. However, you're more than welcome to share my information with anyone, and we'll provide brochures as well as a FAQ for anyone that needs it or wants it. And then we're available to come and speak to answer questions as it relates to, uh, who's going to, uh, be taxed more. And the answer to that is no one, uh, right now. And I bring Wes with me when I speak because I need him to jump in if needed. Uh, lastly, I'm always, uh, proud to see young people from the high school, uh, doing things that, uh, make us proud, and that is, uh, taking the learning that they have received at the school outside of the classroom. So my hat's off to them for the wonderful job they're doing in making tonight's, uh, production special, so, thank you.
Thank you. All right. All right, um, council members, we'll start with you, Mr. Oldham.
Uh, I'd like to reiterate, uh, everything that's been said about the preparedness for the disaster that, uh, gave us, uh, uh, the, uh, cooperation between all ladies of the county lessened what could've been a very, very bad problem for a lot of people. And we did have a lot of, uh, areas where people were, uh, adversely affected, but I think of preparation and working together, we, we tried to lessen that, uh, uh, demand on, on the people. Uh, also, uh, one, one month from today, we have a very important election. Uh, a, a lot of work goes into every election, and we need, the least we can do is get out and vote and support a candidate of your choice. Uh, and like I said again, I appreciate everything our, uh, voter registration board does to get information out to people in Marlboro County about the elections that's coming up, and, and I do know that they've extended the, uh, voter registration till October the seventeenth for people that aren't registered to vote. Normally, it would've been, uh, over with, I guess, last weekend, but they have extended that because of Hurricane Florence to October the seventeenth. For people that haven't registered to vote, they can register and vote in the November sixth election. Appreciate everything that Ron and everybody does for support of the citizens of Marlboro County. The sheriff, of course, he's, he stands for everything, and he's all, you hear him all hours of the night out working and stuff, so I appreciate everything he does.
I just echo that and, uh, thank everybody for what they did during the storm and after the storm. Everybody's kept going, and I know they had it tough here for a while, but I, I appreciate it, and I know that says so big to you.
My thing is, uh, the volunteers. A lot of volunteers came from out of town. Um, some came from sports up in Washington State and worked daily, and they was passing food out twice a day, um, throughout this county. Our local volunteers, I mean, more people in the county, I mean, from all different jobs in the county came from everywhere to support the, um, sheriff department, city police department. I mean, everybody really kicked in. Uh, it's just, to see people get together, public works, I mean, them cats, public works. Twenty-four, seven, they, they there. I mean, you know, not about their jobs, salary, anything, they were there. That, that's a big thing. I mean, that, that was really, really important, the way we, we worked together, you know, trying to do the best we can do for the people, right? The other thing, like you was talking about, Oldham, well, you know, we stay at sixteen percent to twenty-two percent of people voting in Marlboro County, that's, that's absolutely crazy, you know? Um, there's a serious time to change that. And we look at things that's going on in our county, throughout the other counties, throughout the country. I, I don't care who you vote for, that make a difference to me, who you vote for, that's a submumble. But we gotta get above that twenty-two percent, which is our high in Marlboro County. We not gonna be able to get anything from the government or nobody else, and we ain't not, not gonna vote. So whatever we need to get people out to vote, they say, I'm Democrat, Republican, makes no difference, vote, and let's, let's get something done there, you know, that's important.
Just echo the same as everybody else did about the, uh, the last storm. I mean, our, uh, county government staff and all, they worked good, you know, uh, other school district staff, I think sheriff's department, city, everybody worked good together, and you know, uh, it all come from just a little bit of planning and working together, and so, uh, it was planned and prepared. We were prepared for it, I think, during Matthew and, you know, just a, a Fox, uh, run, and then, you know, the next thing, and then, so, uh, you know, you, as somebody out there on the other end in the, in the storm, you know, you wanna make sure that everything's taken care of, uh, and I think, uh, Steve Akers did a super job. I wanna give, uh, you know, make sure, recognize him. Uh, Doug and his staff done a good job getting roads back going. A lot of people just couldn't get out after the storm, so, you know, and they, a lot of rain did a wonderful job, so, uh, we just, uh, thankful, and hopefully this next one will blow past us and we'll have much to, uh, be out of commission for.
Uh, like, I'd just like to reiterate, um, what Jason says. Uh, staff did a fantastic job, uh, Sheriff Fleming, Steve Akers, Doug, Ron. Um, and the planning ahead, we, we were well prepared, uh, the planning really paid off, and, uh, we, we worked well, all the agencies worked well together, and, uh, that's what it's gonna take.
Okay. First of all, I would like to say, regardless of what all of us been through and where we at today, nobody washed over us but the good master.
That's right.
He brought us through. I gotta give him credit. He brought us through to where we at today, and he's keep on keeping us. We blessed, and out of this storm, a lot of people might've been damaged and all, but a lot of them gonna be blessed through it and from it. I had one man tell me, he said, Mrs. Plato said, you know what? Said, I, I hate, I lost what I lost, but I thought, I count myself blessed because I was stressed out and dead up to my neck, but through this storm, I'm gonna be blessed. So I got a relief. So through it all, somebody gonna be blessed through this, you know? So we got a lot to be thankful for. Next, I'd like to thank, um, Mr. Lemon, thank you for all you did, and thank you for the thing that you did for me. And also, I'd like to thank Mr. Munderlin and all those that called and checked on me to see where I was, and, 'cause I left town, y'all. I left in a hurry. I carried so much stuff away from home, I couldn't hardly get it back in the house when I got back home. And when I did get back home, after I got back and got settled in, I found only one thing that I lost, and that was one of my wigs. And I called my grandson and said, I, yeah, I lost my wig. And I called my grandson to ask him, could he find it? He said, no, Grandma, I don't have your wig, you gonna have to buy you another one. So I, that's the only thing I lost, but I thank God that we, we all made it through, seriously.
I think FEMA has a phone.
If they don't have a phone for it, well, I'm gonna look them up.
I saw something about, y'all, what the hell? What the fuck is your wig?
But thank y'all, I, I really appreciate everything that was done, and we still moving. Thank you.
Yeah, we got grace and mercy, uh, we are here again today. Um, I know I have, um, um, got to say that the Red Cross, uh, in the county, the feeding of the citizens was, um, and, I, I gotta speak for Clayo, 'cause that's where I was, and it was well received. First day was kinda slow, but when the word got out, man, it, I mean, it, the ladies that came from Missouri, uh, we formed a bond, you know, and we, even, they stayed after the hours, even when Red Cross telling them they need to cut off at seven, and people in line, um, you know, and they said, no, we, we gonna feed until all food get go, all food get gone. And, um, the Clayo Police Department, you know, took them out to so far to make sure they get on the right road, and, um, and what I did, you know, I, I stayed in contact with them, I even called them at nine o'clock, make sure they got home. And, and they were, you know, so thankful that, you know, that we, a citizen, would take time out to call them to check on them. I said, you know, you come from Missouri. I went to Little Town Clayo in Marlboro County to, and they were so happy, they were just, you know, you could see it was not a drag, was not, well, I gotta do this, you know? They were well, um, pleased to do it, and we were, uh, we were so happy to receive that, um, the love and, and support from Red Cross. You know, we see that on TV, way off, you know, Red Cross, you know, donated to the Red Cross and so forth and so on, but until you actually receive the benefits, um, and, and the support that they, they put out, you know, then you really appreciate it. Um, and, you know, we say a lot of things about Light Company, but they, they worked out. They, my light was off for like twelve-four hours, hard twenty-four, but, or the twenty-fifth hour, I popped back on. Uh, but then, some people, you know, went a little longer, you know, but, um, generators and everything else, you know, but it, it, it take a, a village to raise everybody. And like Dr. McCord said, you know, we do so much more when we pull together, everybody pulling apart, away from each other, and duplicating services and everything else. Um, the Wildlife, you know, Agency, you know, with the boats and getting people out, you know, getting them, um, out of hot waters and, and getting them to safe land and the shelters, you know, we thanking for that, uh, for the shelters that, you know, the school provided. But, um, like I said, all in all, you know, uh, it was, it was a tough five, six days, and we still, you know, recovering, but, you know, and the system, you know, this is for the, for the TV land. Be patient with us, um, the county, you know, we, we can't do so much, you know, with the mosquitoes, you know, they, it is a hard time, you know, when you're working every day, you know, but we doing what we can do, uh, as much as we can do, you know, so, you know, just be, continue to be patient, and we gonna get through this again.
Yeah. All right. Thank you. I could just add to the accolades. I wanna point out a couple of things. Everybody's talking about, uh, how well received the Red Cross meals. Typically, Red Cross provides meals for its shelters, and we thank you, Dr. McLeod, for the Blenheim School and, um, the custodial staff that helped keep the place clean, and, um, just, it was wonderful down there to be in that building, we thank you for that. But it took about five or six hours making phone call after phone call after phone call, and Mr. Munderlin finally got to somebody in New Jersey, said, oh, you all want some food? Five or six hours on the phone, but the next day, twice a day, and it was quality meals. And we had so many volunteers, they were falling over each other, so it's, it was satisfying, but, um, kudos to you for that because that's something they didn't have to do, but we asked, we were persistent. We were persistent. Um, I won't go but, and just repeat the same thing, uh, thanking everybody, uh, but I do what, I do want some information from FEMA, if we can get it, about the number of people served, um, any type of, if they can give us numbers on, uh, what's personal or housing, uh, temporary housing or repairs, if they're doing cash benefits, if they're doing, uh, low interest loans, whatever we can get from FEMA, so that we can begin to look at, um, the quality of lives for the people as they begin to put things back together, especially for, um, Shady Rests and, um, Richardson Park, because they are in a very, um, precarious situation, um, because of where they live. So if you could get that information to me, we wanna take that a step further, make sure that we have turned over every stone to provide some financial resources for people in the county that need it the most. And with that said, um, oh, I would like to say that a beaver swam up to my neighbor's yard. So ladies, you wanted to share about your wig, so I had to tell about the beaver. And, um, they called animal service, um, and they came, but I was amazed, a beaver, you know, from, I don't know where it came from, but it was in there. And the other good thing, on a good note, my garden was underwater, knee deep, and it drained in about twenty-four hours, and I promptly went out and planted some collards, so we gonna eat good as long as my, Matt, Matthew Michael doesn't mess with it, but, um, anyway. My uncle used to say that every four or five years, you need a tropical storm because it's been so dry, but we got a bit more than we asked for, so Uncle John, you got doing yourself, so you can back off on that. But on that note, yes, sir.
One other thing, uh, I guess some people know, but Linda McMahon, who was administrator for the Small Business Administration, cabinet level position with the Trump administration, she was here today and met with a lot of people, went out at tech and, uh, very well received, and I had a few minutes to speak with her, and her first thoughts was she was very much concerned about Marlboro County now and in the future, about where we go from here, but I think that's a pretty, pretty big honor for a cabinet level position to come into county, and she mingled with the people and talked with them, and, uh, they had, I think Ron and them had a meeting with her and stuff, went very well, so just wanted to throw that in.
Yeah, she was very, personally, you talked to, she, uh, she, 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 you know, the wrestling thing on TV, now she's a captain, very smart business lady. She met with a very small group of business people, went from nursing homes to air business and all that, and places her, they set up shop here in this building, uh, you know, there's a lot of loans, but it does, it can happen, so it was a good time.
Yeah. Yeah, all right. Um, was there a representative from, um, social services at the group today?
They had folks from every agency, I didn't speak with them.
Okay, all right, 'cause I've been, you know, we've been making some inquiries at the governor's office about providing some emergency funds and emergency SNAP benefits to people that lost everything, and there's been no response from that state agency, so we'll keep calling. We're not gonna give up. Um, if that's it, all hearts and minds are clear, I call this meeting adjourned. Yeah, yes, sir, please.
Please, I would ask that, uh, county council officers and the tenants, keep those officers family, I'll tell you something, I went to the funeral yesterday, and you had a family that stepped to see all families, and they were really touching me, and one of the females that was still in the hospital wanted to go to the funeral, and she couldn't, they rolled her bed on the ground, the sixer, and the secret worked out, she was there. And the sheriff, they had a very good friend, he assisted me, and we had that traffic, you know, everybody, so y'all keep doing the training, we'll be sure.
Right, I got about that. And the other thing about, um, the hurricane, we lost physical things, but there were no lives lost in Marlboro County, and we're grateful for that, so, yeah.
Dr. McLeod, you know, we submitted today, preparing comments and all that, you know, we keep going on and on about that, and when you're talking, y'all are giving comments, I think of all kinds of things that happened, individual examples of what people did, and that, it's just a possible good, good, and, you know, we, um, we'll try to prepare a more detailed report for you all, maybe in a meeting in a month, so we can give you that. I, I don't want it to go unrecognized what people did, they're in the, the real step up.
Yes.
And, um, and also, we, we will plan, uh, if council did, uh, did they try to get her for her father and mom, we'll get that together as well.
Right.
Sorry for interrupting.
That's okay.
It's just so much, and it's just so overwhelming, and you actually kind of get where you're walking out, and you're trying to move on, and I know what you forgot, so, I don't know.
Thank you. All right, call this meeting adjourned. Thank you. Be safe. One more time. How'd you make that?